By the thought of investing in me, I hereby declare this meeting at the Kuchhakenburg Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it.
Ms. Sokolowski?
President.
Ms. Bargn?
Here.
Ms. Lannert?
Here.
Mr. Stokely?
Here.
Ms. Lannert?
Here.
Mr. Tino?
Here.
Mr. Rifford?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
Here.
Prayer of counsel, please. Have we... Dan.
O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example on thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
President of the faculty?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ah, I don't have any, uh...
Mr. President, you have... The only announcement you asked me to make is about the executive session that was held immediately prior to this meeting for both a legal and real estate matter.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, wait a minute. You got a presentation?
Actually, the two presentations. Item B, we had... We found out late this afternoon that that request for the hearing has been asked to be postponed, so that would no longer be on the agenda. And item A would actually have to occur immediately following the adjournment. It has to be a hearing that is not a part of our meeting. So, once you adjourn, you would have the hearing immediately thereafter. Is that correct, Ms. Detler? So... And we have had a request. Mr. Stokely asked for Mr. McAvoy wanted to approach counsel this evening as a late addition. If counsel has no objections, Mr. Stokely, if you'd like to introduce why for counsel's considerations to as a last-minute change to the agenda.
Yeah, you want... You want to do that now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mac, you want... Come on up, Mac. Let Mac come up now.
Yeah, under presentations.
Yeah, the presentation. Explain, Mac, what St. Matz is going to do and...
Okay. As you know, St. Cosma's church has been sold to the Gothic church. We are attempting to move the statues, St. Cosma's statues, from St. Cosmas over to St. Matthews' center in a procession type. We are leaving St. Cosma's church, coming down to Fourth and Naples, up Fourth and Naples or up forth to Fast Street, over to Harry, down to the church. We're going to take statues into the church, and we're going to have what we call a healing service. After the statues are there for a little bit for the healing service, we're going to take them to our new center. That's our plan. We're going to carry them. It's going to be a challenge, a real challenge, but we are going to do it, and we will get it done. With your permission, we send a letter to Rich there, we send a letter to the chief of police. As long as you guys approve it, we're all for it.
And I have another volunteer for you. Karen wants to help carry the statue also.
All right, Karen, we'll put you right in the front.
If anybody, other council people want to...
My husband, you should get it.
Bob Stokely has volunteered already, so, uh...
Yeah.
You know, it's welcome to anybody, anybody.
When is it being done?
We are going to attempt to carry statues.
September 20th, correct.
Okay.
Mac, the time, September...
September 18th.
Eighteenth.
At 1:30.
Correct.
It figures.
September 18th at 1:30.
No, that's a Monday.
That's a Sunday.
It's a Monday. The 17th is a Sunday, I believe.
The 18th is a Sunday.
The 18th is a...
It's a Sunday?
Yeah, it is a Sunday.
Yeah.
You're right.
What's the date?
It's the 18th.
September 18th. You're right. You're right. I got it.
Karen is there because... All right, we got it, Mac.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Huh?
No.
There's no objections.
Nobody against it, right?
Yeah.
No, all in favor.
We don't have to think about it, do we, Mike?
No.
Mike?
No, okay. Let's get that... Okay. Go ahead, Rich.
The consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Items A, B, and C, very simply approving the Kuchhakenburg Council's special meeting minutes, regular special meeting minutes, the 20th and 27th. Wanting the President to appoint Gary Davis and David Murphy as assistant fire chiefs for Conshohocken Fire Company Number Two, rejecting the bid for the community center fellowship house air conditioning project, approving a change order for the Borough Hall landscape project to comply with the council bid award, and approve the allocation of $170,000 for the infrastructure stormwater line item for the purchase of fire radios. And on the change order, just so everyone's clear, if you remember, when you awarded the bid, there was a lot of discussion back and forth on the types of plants and the pots and things of that nature, but since as a result of that discussion, the changes resulted in an actual decrease of the project cost, it is still a change which requires a change order even though the number's going down. So, that is items A through F. And if no one objects, it would be in order to adopt the consent agenda, items A through F.
I'll make that motion to accept.
I'll second it.
I got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
What is the... What is the credit we're going to get back for the...
It's $8,000. What is the credit on... It's in here.
It's around $3,000.
I like the eight better.
I thought it was eight.
It's 28 hounds.
28 hounds.
Yours is eight. Okay. Okay, Rich, what else we got there?
Under unfinished business, we have two bid items.
Rich?
What?
Another question.
So, on that reduced... Maybe I didn't read it correctly. We're doing less, correct? But we're not doing less. Like, I thought I read we weren't doing flower pots?
We changed... We made several changes. Go ahead, Pat.
So, yeah, we're not doing less than what you saw at that presentation. It's just that what you saw at that presentation was after we had made some changes with... in coordination with Mr. Manfredi about the designs that were happening. So, the presentation you saw that evening is exactly what is now reflected in the change order.
Okay.
Yes. Quick question, and when will this start?
Well, it would hopefully go in this fall. As long as you award it, they'll let them know. You don't want them putting it in before September, just because it's so hot out there. But yes, it'd be this fall.
Okay.
The next two items are the Borough Hall supplemental lighting package, Ms. Reeves, and then that'll be immediately followed up with the signage. Ms. Reeves, if you would, please, just explain why these two items are separated and the history of it, where they were originally together.
Yeah, so originally, we had both the lighting package for the Borough Hall and the signage package together, and we bid them, and we received no responses at all. So, we broke it up into two separate packages, the lighting and the signage. When we bid... When we... When the bid was closed, there was no bids for the lighting package. We received five bids for the signage package. So, I can review the signage package results. Let me do that.
And if you would, please also just briefly reveal to everyone what's...
Is the mic on?
What's in there.
Okay. So, the construction drawings for it, bronze plaques for the vestibule. And here's a blow-up of them. Some exterior pin-mounted letters that will be underneath the seal. There's two sets of them. One says administration and police, and then the second set says Borough Hall entrance, which is mounted right next to the stairs. There's a police sign, some additional shields similar to the one behind you for other locations around the Borough Hall. Push-and-pull hardware for the doors and some safety vinyl, so people don't walk into the glass. And then we also included the electrical scope for the monument sign, since there's going to be two LCD screens in the monument sign and some illumination, so that whole electrical package is tied into one. So, the... Our cost estimate was about $50,000 roughly that we put together at Bergman. The low bid on this project was $29,500, and the high bid was $95,700. There's a few significant problems with the low bid. They submitted no bid documentation, so no bid bond, as well as their numbers for Masonry are really low, their electrical number is very low, so I would recommend not looking at that. The two that we should consider are Nova Sign and Compass Sign. The difference between the two bids is about $11,000. I could find a couple of problems with the Compass bid. Some of their numbers are just a little too high, so I recommend the Nova Sign bid at $43,290.
So, what was the other bid?
No, the other one was $54,620.
Okay. So, you're recommending the lower bid?
Yeah.
And that is the electrical, everything?
Everything for the signage, yeah.
Just a caution, if you would, on the lowest bid of $29,000, what were the reasons that you were suggesting that we take a look at whether or not it is the lowest responsible bid? Because we have to be very cautious that if that bid number, which is the lowest bid, there's very specific reasons for not...
But they can't get a bid bond, right? Is that correct?
They didn't submit the work. They didn't submit the bid bond.
They did not submit it.
So, they're disqualified, right? Mike?
Yep.
It's a fatal error. We can't consider...
Yes. You just wanted to make sure it wasn't heard of.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the next lowest responsible bidder is which one?
Nova Sign Group at $43,290. And I can't find really anything wrong with their bid, so...
So, we're talking about $13,000 between the low bid and the middle?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, the middle bid.
Mm-hmm.
You okay with that, Mike?
Yeah.
If it's the next lowest qualified, yeah.
Right.
We'd have to evaluate it as though the disqualified bidder never submitted, so...
So, if... Could you just restate that number? For Nova... It's Nova?
Nova is $43,290.
And where are they from?
Nova Sign Group, um, I'm not sure where they're... They're local. I'm not sure exactly where. I went to their... I just can't remember off the top of my head, but I did go to their website. I'm very familiar, working with Compass Sign. I've worked with them for a number of years. They did the signs already around the building, and there... I looked up Nova's work, and it's very comparable to what Compass Sign does, if not, seems better, to be honest with you, so I'd feel confident in saying that they would be fine.
I would just suggest, then, if counsel is inclined to award the Borough Hall supplemental or the Borough Hall signage project to Nova for $43,290, subject to the standard solicitor and manager reviews.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
The next signer under unfinished business is a legal matter. Turnover to Mr. Savona, but it's authorizing the Borough Manager to execute the site development agreement for the 51 Washington Street and Septa parking lot expansion.
Yes, I'll be brief. This is not a normal practice to have counsel approve the execution of site development agreements. That's normally done administratively after an approval, but this agreement, as we discussed last month, is a little different. The property developer for 51 Washington, in the process of getting that project approved, agreed to install or to build a parking lot on the adjacent Septa property along the tracks, which was designed as a part of the land development approval. It was funded in part at the time by a multimodal grant from PennDOT for $400,000, which corresponded to the then-project budget estimates that would have put the construction of the project somewhere just a little north of $600,000. At the time of the approval, as you... Some of you may recall, counsel negotiated a developer impact fee to the Borough of a total of $365,000, a portion of which counsel agreed to dedicate back to the construction of that lot, because obviously, we have little available public parking in that area of the Borough. When the Septa lot was not being used in off-peak hours, Septa doesn't charge for parking. They would make that publicly available, and it would provide some additional parking for anyone using the riverfront trails or the amenities at the riverfront. The original developer sold the project. MC Roseland is the successor owner of the project. They are in the process now of demolishing and clearing the site, getting ready to build the residential building. Current cost estimates for the construction of the parking lot exceeded our original expectations. So, there's been a great deal of communication back and forth between the developers' council, myself, and Septa and their council about how to handle that additional cost. The current cost estimates for the construction of the lot is roughly $795,000. That would require some reallocation of the expenses over and above the original $585,000. What the parties propose, and we would recommend, is that that $210,000 be divided equally among the three parties. So, Roseland will kick in $70,000. Septa is going to contribute $70,000. The Borough would contribute an additional $70,000 credit. Again, this is not cash out of our pocket. It's a credit against the developer impact fee, so that we can proceed with the development and construction of the lot. So, those terms are memorialized in this agreement. We're trying to keep this, as crazy as it is, as simple as possible by putting all of this into one agreement, so we don't have all these different contracts flying around. In addition, we will need to agree to do some land swaps between the Borough and Septa. Part of this project contemplates the relocation of Washington Street closer to the building, which will help straighten it out and improve that, so that we can fit the Septa parking lot in next to the tracks, but also so that it improves access to the properties further down toward Plymouth Township, the Nevee parcel in particular. At the end of the day, if we approve this agreement, that'll enable us to do the land swaps with Septa, transfer that property back and forth. It'll enable Roseland to build us a new stretch of Washington Street as it passes along the building, will allow them to build the parking area, and we can wrap all of this up, hopefully, and not have to revisit it. So, that's all been memorialized in the agreement. If counsel's inclined, I'd ask your approval of the motion to authorize signature on the agreement. Next steps will be to have the developer sign, and then ultimately, this would be approved by Septa at their board meeting in September. Everybody inside on the administrative side is supporting it at Septa, but they don't meet again until September 19th or 22nd, I believe. So, the official approval wouldn't be done until then, but in the meantime, we would proceed as though it were approved and the developer could get started.
Question?
Yes.
Is there any possible way we can throw some bathrooms in there?
That's not part of the design. Septa's not interested in pursuing bathrooms at that location at this point.
But how did they...
They have...
How did they get away with that?
They have budgeted in their capital budget for, I think, $18.5 million for the construction of a new train station, which they are committing to getting in the planning process... Accelerating the planning process and getting to construction within the next three to five years. That's in the capital budget. That's the first time it's appeared in the capital budget in the time that I've been here that we've been pushing Septa. They are now moving as though their hair is on fire to get that project underway. So, they are looking at this lot as a temporary solution. Septa, for a long, long time, has been sort of spoiled by the fact that they were able to park at the outbound station where the redevelopment authority owned that parcel. They paid a very nominal rent, didn't have to think about it, never even paved it. They just threw some gravel in and let people park all helter-skelter. And when that property was transferred to Mr. Wyman and the lease was canceled, Septa realized they had an immediate problem, which is, oh, my God, we have no parking. So, this parking lot is only designed, really, to serve that short-term need until they can complete the planning and the construction of the new station and any parking facilities there.
So, they're going to give us the new rendering that they gave us 10 years ago?
The rendering that you saw 10 years ago wasn't done by Septa. That was a planning document that was generated internally here.
But Septa still left and put it out. And I'm not trying to be smart, Mike, but...
Understood.
Listen, you didn't answer my question.
They're not putting bathrooms in, Bob.
I'm not trying to be smart, but you didn't...
No, my answer is very clear.
But you didn't answer my question.
The answer is they're not putting a bathroom...
How do they get away with that?
Because they don't have a formal station building. It's a stop.
It is a formal station.
It's not a building.
Let me ask you another question. The people that work in that station, I think it's one person or two people, I'll bet you they have a bathroom, don't they?
Yeah, they have.
No idea.
They have to.
Yeah, well, how come the people that are paying the money to get on the train? There's no bathroom on a train. There's no bathroom. Some of the people stand on that platform down there for 20 minutes. So, what do you do?
Go before you get the train?
Or you go somewhere down there.
I think there are two issues. One is the Septa parking lot related to 51 Washington that was part of the development. And I think two goes to the letter that we received from the general manager of Septa with their commitment to build a full train station. I'm sure it'll include a bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's really two projects. One is the parking lot right now to take care of the immediate need for parking, and two is the building of a, call it a real train station, in the very near future. And that's why they sent that commitment letter, which I believe I shared about a month ago with counsel. So, I think that is where you will see not only a bathroom, but a very nice state-of-the-art train station.
So, three years, people have to wait to have a bathroom down there. I think... You know what? Publicly, I think it's a disgrace. I think it's a disgrace, and I think somebody should notify Septa, and I will do it myself also, but I think it's a disgrace that that platform is loaded with people down there every morning, and they're paying a lot of money to get on that train, that they can't put a porta potty down there, or two, or a trailer down there that has bathrooms in it?
Well, that's separate from building a bathroom within a new facility. I mean, asking them to put some sort of a temporary restroom facility, we could certainly make that request.
That's what I'm asking. I even brought up the urinals they put in New York, the urinal screens out in the open.
We could certainly...
And that's... They really have that.
Bob, the problem, obviously, it's not an answer that we can give you in this meeting. It's something that if you sat down with Septa, I'm sure they could explain to you why it's not as easy as putting a porta potty down there. You've got to have handicap-accessible facilities.
That's right.
You can't discriminate against people. If they... If a public entity like Septa starts to put in accommodations like that, they've got to make them accessible to everybody, and they simply don't have the ability to make an accessible facility available at that location. That's why they're talking about relocating the entire station to a place where they can build an elevated platform that meets ADA requirements, that has handicap-accessible facilities, so that everybody that rides the train will be able to access them. It's not the answer you want to hear, Bob, and I understand that.
But Mike, these portable...
Don't shoot the messenger. I'm just telling you.
Portable trailers are ADA.
And they don't have...
If you put a porta potty in, they're ADA too. They're both use. So, I don't know where they're coming from. I mean, if there's... I mean, it's just, to me...
I think it's a site access problem.
I can't believe that none of the people that stand on that train station have never complained. Now, maybe they do complain to Septa, but I just think it's...
You do realize that...
I don't use the train, but I feel for them people down there.
Yeah, but you do realize that from Norristown all the way to Central City, there is not a single train station that has a bathroom.
I don't believe that.
Yeah.
I don't believe that. I can't...
I've ridden the train all the way in. There is not a station.
I can't believe... You got off at every station that made... I can't believe it.
I've lived on that train.
I'll check.
I lived on that train.
I just can't believe that.
Yeah, it's just the way it is. They took out a lot of the train stations.
I have a question on the dollars.
Yes.
Okay. So, we said that the original dollar was $365.
Just fucked it up real bad.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at splitting the difference between the...
Original dollars were $585.
Okay.
So, it's $400 from the multimodal grant. Counsel had originally agreed to commit $185,000 to make up the $585.
Okay.
So, the difference between the current budget at $795 and the original estimated budget at $585 is $210,000. That's what we're splitting up, $70,000 apiece. So, our portion would go to $255. PennDOT's is $400. Roseland is 70, and Septa is 70. That gets us to $795.
On top of the $400,000.
But that's not out-of-pocket money for us.
No. You would still... Basically, the effect on us would be we reduce our developer impact fee from $365 to $110. So, we'd still have $110,000 that could be used for whatever general purposes you guys want to use it for, and we would have the construction covered, at least on the current budget.
Okay. The other thing that we talked about the last time we were talking about this is the idea of assurances from Septa, that when they do build the new train station, that the lot that then is left behind, somehow or another, we can look at it for use for the Borough, because we talked a little bit about if we didn't do that, what would the cost of building a parking lot in the future for the Borough be? So, it would definitely be more than the $255 investment that we're making. So, is that built into what it is that you work with Septa for?
The discussions that we've had with Septa, their plan currently at the new station would be to construct structured parking. So, they're... I think that their estimates, at least the planning estimates that they have, contemplate enough parking at that location, because, again, it's going to be probably six or so hundred feet down track to where it straightens out. I don't believe that they're expecting that this lot would continue to be a primary parking lot for the station once the new garage and that new facility is built. So, again, Septa will always own it, because it's within the railroad right-of-way a big portion of it, and they can't... It's under federal law. They can't dedicate that or give that to the Borough. At the same time, in their view, it's always open to public use. They don't meter it. They don't put parking, you know, those kiosks in, or they don't make anybody pay for parking at that location, and they're never going to make people pay for that. And they're never going to make people pay for that. So it truly becomes an open public lot at that point.
Well, the question is, would they and have they in the past where they have lots and people needing rent to rent spaces if they want to bring businesses in? Would they take that into consideration from slots that would be open to the public? Because then I would...
Yeah, that's not something that's, yeah, no, it's a fair question. It's not something that's ever come up. I can ask, I can certainly ask them that. If the concern is that we don't want them sort of impounding some of those spaces to rent them out for profit, I think, I don't think SEPTA would have a problem agreeing to that. I mean, from all indications, they're not building this to accommodate anybody but their current users and then down the road. And again, they have been resistant a number of times, I will tell you. Roseland has sort of pushed to try to get, since they're putting money in over and above, and they're doing all the work to build the lot, they've been edging or nibbling around the edges to try to get SEPTA and the borough to agree that, you know, the primary use of the lot off-peak would be for the building, which we've resisted, and SEPTA has resisted. There's just simply no interest for that at all. So as far as I can tell at this point, that's not even in the cards. You're welcome.
I need a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The next item of new business is to consider adopting the following borough ordinances. Amendment to the Public Consumption Ordinance, ordinance twenty-six oh-two, amendment to the Borough's Peddling and Soliciting Ordinance, ordinance twenty sixteen oh-three, and amendment to the Borough's Traffic Ordinance, ordinance twenty sixteen oh-four. Mr. Simone, if you care to summarize.
Sure. I'll be as brief as possible. These are relatively straightforward. The Open Container Amendment, currently section six dash five oh-two of our Open Container Ordinance, which is basically the ordinance that prohibits consumption of alcoholic beverages on the streets and public spaces of the borough, currently conflicts with our sidewalk café license provisions. This came up, Lieutenant Metz and I discussed it when we were having some discussions relating to the beer gardens and beer festivals that are being undertaken in the borough. What I proposed is an amendment that would simply exempt anyone who is consuming alcohol at a sidewalk café or someplace that's licensed by the borough to serve in the, on the sidewalk. It would, it would make consumption under those circumstances not a violation of the Open Container Ordinance. Likewise, if there are special events, parades, or any other event where council has authorized the sale of alcoholic beverages either in a borough park or on the street, those only once approved by the borough, those would also be exempt. So if you went to a beer festival at the Hayfield, you couldn't get cited for open container violations because you were drinking a beer on a borough property. That's the limit of the change. We're not changing anything else. We're just carving out those two exceptions to really reflect status quo of what we're doing. The second ordinance is the Amendment to the Peddling and Soliciting Ordinance. This is really just fine-tuning a couple of items. The first is to grant authority to the borough manager administratively to designate some of the functions in issuing the licenses and monitoring the follow-up of the licenses. It's a little, little less than clear, so we're just clarifying that power. Secondly, I've amended section thirteen dash thirteen oh-six, which has provided the ability of residents to register their property on a do-not-solicit list. But that hasn't necessarily been published well and doesn't have some of the provisions that you typically see. So what we've done is sort of beef that up. If you want your property included on the do-not-solicit list, you submit something in email, a letter to the borough in writing. Your property address goes on that list. It stays on that list until either you or some other owner decides to take it off. The borough can now issue placards that can be posted in the window or at the property with the borough seal saying, this is a registered property, do not solicit here. And that list will be given to anybody who has given a peddling and soliciting license so that they're aware that they're not to solicit at those locations. And if they do it, they have a variety of penalties, including the license can be revoked, and they can be prosecuted for the summary violation of violating the ordinance. So that's really just beefing up some of the existing procedures by adding some more teeth and some more protections for our residents who don't want people soliciting at their doors. The last ordinance, and I am not going to go through all of this, but the last is a very comprehensive update to our Parking and Traffic Ordinance. Title fifteen is the Borough's Motor Vehicle Code. This is where we have all of the restrictions relating to parking and stop signs and speed limits and road weights and all those items that control traffic flow in the borough that are separate from the Pennsylvania Motor Vehicle Code. The police chief had done a rather lengthy, multi-multi-multi-page study where he found conditions in the field that weren't necessarily provided for in the ordinance, some stop signs that weren't authorized, some speed limit signs that had been posted but weren't necessarily in the ordinance. So we've gone through and systemically cleaned up all of those known sort of inconsistencies. We also made some amendments to clarify the parking plan that the engineers came up with for the parking around the new Borough Hall, some angle parking, some parking twenty-minute limits, some permit-only parking on Forest. And then we clarified some of the provisions relating to handicap parking and some of the parking citation provisions, which actually weren't being enforced by the borough. So we're recommending that the council consider adoption of all three.
Question under maximum speed limits established on certain streets. East Fifth, East Sixth, Harry, Hollowell, Special School, there. Are these already signed fifteen miles per hour?
Yes. My understanding from the chief is that these are all signs that are in existence, but were not included in the current ordinance. So this is just codifying existing.
We need a vote for just changing this?
Yes, we would need a...
Motion to approve.
We would need a motion.
Yes.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
I got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the next item is to consider bids for the twenty sixteen paving and storm sewer rehab projects. Mr. Buke?
Good evening, Harry.
Mr. Buke is standing in for... Mr. Buke is standing in for Mr. Muse.
Okay.
I've got two items for your consideration this evening. The first one is the two thousand and sixteen paving project, which consists of East Sixth Avenue from Hollowell Street to Wells Street, travel lanes only. West First Avenue from Maple to the Dead End. West Ninth Avenue from Maple Street to Wood Street. Wood Street from West Ninth Avenue to West Tenth Avenue. There was an alternate bid of Wood Street from West Sixth Avenue to West Seventh Avenue. We received, bids were opened on Friday, August the twelfth, at ten a.m. We had two bidders, Kehoe Construction and Nathan Avanesio. The low bidder was Kehoe Construction at a hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the primary bid. And they were also low in the alternate bid of twenty-two thousand eighty-one dollars. RVB has recommended that we award, we have worked with Kehoe. Kehoe has done several projects. I think this will be their third or fourth project in town. They've done a very good job for us. And RVB has recommended we award both the base bid and the alternate bid for a total of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. This recommendation has also been confirmed by the Borough Engineer, Paul Hughes.
And just so everyone understands, this project began when Mr. Muse was still with RVB. So this is one of those other closeout projects. Next year, this won't be sourced out.
And this is only paving? This isn't storm sewer?
This is, this is only paving. I have the stormwater rehab program is next.
And those streets were picked because that's where they are in the cycle, or were they streets that needed priority?
They were picked because, well, we have, we have a, we have a program that is now fifteen years old. It hasn't really been adhered to. Paul and I have discussed trying to get out and do something. Or possibly, obviously, it'll be my replacement. We'll get out and do something to update it. But we have driven to town, and we feel that these are the most needed areas.
These are the priorities.
These, we believe these are the priorities. I mean, we've got, we've got many others, but, but we think these are the priorities for what we have to spend. West Ninth Avenue from Maple to Wood Street.
Places along there that have some serious curb damage.
We will not, this program, we do not do curbs.
Oh, wait a minute. When was that discussed?
This is the mill and overlay program.
Okay.
This is not a infrastructure or a road program.
So we're just going to let, so how are we going to, how are we going to work that?
We didn't feel that, we didn't feel that the curbs were in that bad a shape that, that we couldn't just mill and overlay it. That is one of the things, that is clearly one of the criteria that we look at when we're doing this. And it's also a street that we're not going to come in in a few years and, and do stormwater management on. There is no stormwater management needed on there, with the exception of the corner at Ninth and Wood. And that has been, that, that has been planned, that will be planned for and done prior to this mill and overlay, which is basically a new inlet that's about eight feet off the corner on Ninth Avenue, but eight feet off the corner at Wood. And then there is a culvert that comes in from Wood Street that ties into that, that is, that's collapsed. And so basically, it's putting in an inlet and running across Wood Street to the big inlet there by Suck Cliff Park, at the, at the top end of Suck Cliff Park. And, and then we can mill and overlay this, and both streets are in pretty bad shape.
So just my memory, we have never did a mill and overlay, and we never, did we replace curbs before or not?
We've never done a mill and overlay replacing curbs. That's part of the road program.
So question number two, we're not going to put any pressure on any residents. You've already inspected them and said there is no curb damage.
Well, no, we haven't said that. We haven't said that. We've just said that we can still mill and overlay the rest of the street.
Without making people replace curbs?
There are some brand-new curbs. There are some, some older granite curbs. But we don't feel that, we don't, we haven't felt that it's, we haven't felt that it's an issue. We didn't feel that it's an issue.
Okay.
Harvey, do they take pictures or video beforehand? In other words, you've got to stand up and do the job.
That is, that is part of the... That is part of the, that is part of the bid specs. We just recently had sidewalk replaced from when we had, when Kehoe actually did Hector Street. There was a complaint that there was some cracked sidewalk and some lifted sidewalk. Kehoe couldn't produce the video, so they were responsible and they did replace it. So if they don't take the video, they're on the hook, and the spec is, is very clear.
But we want to make it very clear that the residents don't misunderstand this, that when we do certain road programs, we do their curbs. Okay, so now we're not, it's a mill and overlay. I just wanted to make sure that we're on the right page.
Well, we have an infrastructure that's going out, an infrastructure program that is going out to bid that will include, by the time it's done, all of Harry Street as a, as a repaving project. All of the intersections that need to be updated, which I believe are all of them, will be updated to, to accessible standards with stormwater starting at Hollowell Street on East Eleventh Avenue, coming, coming up to Harry Street, turning the corner at Harry Street, going down Harry Street to, I believe it's Tenth Avenue, but it could be Ninth Avenue. I haven't seen the, I haven't looked at the plans in probably a month. And then, and then, and then we have a break in, in the flow of the water, so we can stop that system. And then we're redoing everything all around the Fellowship House. The whole Fellowship House corners will be, will be redone with, with new storm sewer inlets, inlets done. And that's going out to bid. We have a meeting on the twenty-second or the twenty-third, which is right after Paul gets back, to finalize those specs to, so that we can get them out to bid. And as you recall, the first half of that project last year was bid, it was bid late, the bids came in high. We had some kind of an issue, some kind of an issue with the concrete work that Mike was not comfortable with. And so we rejected those bids and rolled that money over to this year. So this year is actually a double, a double project. And then what we've always done in the past is that we've done all of our underground and curb and, and, and street corner replacement, and then given that a year to settle before we actually come in and do the final paving. Because so often we found that it didn't get backfilled right, and a year, year, year and a half later, we have a, you know, we have a little sinkhole. And then we got to go in and patch a brand-new street. The utilities get to them fast enough. We don't need to get to them ourselves.
Minus that delay that you just talked about, are we staying on schedule with our street and road programs?
We're doing the best we can with the money that we're being given. In my opinion, we're falling behind with our streets terribly. And I have been saying that for years, but we haven't been given any more money to be able to do it. It was five or six years ago that we finally were able to, it was the Public Works Committee. We were able to convince council that we needed to allot another hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for mill and, for this mill and overlay program because our streets were just, they needed it. They were, they were deteriorating faster than we can fix them. And unfortunately, it's kind of, kind of where we are, and, and we're not the only, we're not the only municipality in the same state. Okay, so the next, the next item for your consideration is the storm...
Excuse me, Harvey, before you move on, just to reiterate, so the paving bid number that's for consideration by council is one fifty-five, five eighty-nine, or one seventy-seven, six seventy?
No, it's one fifty-five, five eighty-nine, plus twenty-two for the alternate, plus twenty-two oh eighty-one for a grand total of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars.
Before you move on, would council like to consider a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I got a motion to second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Storm sewer rehab project?
Okay, the storm sewer rehab project will consist of cleaning, televising, grouting, and lining approximately three hundred and sixty lineal feet of thirty-inch diameter storm sewer RCP, which is reinforced concrete pipe. We received one bid, Video Pipe Services for fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. RVB has recommended we award this to Video Pipe Services for fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. And this recommendation has also been confirmed by the Borough Engineer, Paul Hughes. Now, this project is...
Is, this is the, the area that, that we are doing this time. We, last Christmas, just before, just before the first of the year, you may remember, we crossed Fifth Avenue with new piping. And, and now with the completion of this, we will be completed all the way down. That line is basically right straight down here and goes down to the Hammers, the old Hammers junkyard. And then it surfaces to where it gets to behind the Hanes Body Park, and then it goes back underground. And presently now it goes down Hollowell Lane to the, like in front of the FOP, which is the other project that we, some of you may remember, we were looking at trying to burn that over for the blue line part of the line. Because we're taking, we figure probably twenty percent of the water in town to flow in town, which is obviously not, not a good plan. So the only portion, and this line starts in the middle of Sixth Avenue, at two hundred block of Sixth Avenue, right across the street actually from the... And that is the only portion starting from here, which goes through the Cosmos Playground parking lot, the blacktop area. And it comes, it comes through up in here up into Sixth Avenue. That's the only portion of this line that is not, that is not...
Do you have the layman, do you have that bike goes through that building?
It's underground.
It's underground.
It's underground.
Want to launder the guy's house?
This is all done through the pipes. This is, the pipes will be, okay, I'm trying to get it. The pipes will be, there are some...
Typically, you shouldn't, we shouldn't have to really do too much with, with RCP, reinforced concrete pipe. However, this pipe has, for whatever reason, seems to have moved over the years, or it wasn't installed properly. So where they join together, there are some gaps, and they need to go in. That's why they are going to clean the pipe. They're going to televise the pipe. We will then review that. We already have TV of all, of all these pipes. So they, they've, the contractor has seen them. Then we will pack those bad joints, and then there will be a liner put, put in the pipe. And we've done, we've done that. Now, this is the only RCP section. The rest of it is all basically a big box. It's all stone with heavy stone over the top, and that, over the last three years, has all been grouted, shotcrete. Like they do, similar to what they do to an in-ground pool by spraying with concrete. Any other questions? So, that would be for your consideration to award to Video Pipe Services for fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to award.
I'll say.
I'll second.
I got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, there's one other item.
What's that?
That we need to take care of. You appointed two assistant chiefs.
What?
They need to be sworn in.
Who? You have them up here?
Are they both here, or just one?
Assistant chiefs here?
Just one.
Okay.
I have a answer.
Okay. Come up, David.
Come up.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm a Bible mayor.
[inaudible]
I understand things. I agree with you. I'm a small square. I'm a small square, and I will support obeying the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and I will discharge duties of my office, and then I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Do you want to say something about your work?
I don't know. We're good. It's just to give you guys an idea, that's all.
Yeah.
And it's like... Could I? We can discuss that.
There is something on the agenda under the unfinished business on the lighting project.
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind just re-reminding us what exactly that consists of, just so that we have a quick overview.
Ms. Reeves?
So, the package contains a lot of spot illumination. So, right now, you have the retaining wall that says Borough of Concha Hocken. There's a spotlight on that. There's a new flagpole that's gonna go in. There's spotlights to illuminate that. There's some wall washers going on the building that's gonna illuminate the architectural features of the building. There's three sight poles going in, like city sight poles along Fourth Street. There are... You know how there's lighting in the trellis currently? That's on full-time, so we're gonna recircuit that lighting, so it could be turned off.
That was one of my biggest questions.
Make it a little duller?
Thank you.
Yeah, we can put it on a dimmer. I think that's in there.
Yes.
We have new conduit running for a potential tenant sign, if that goes in. There's new wall-mounted lighting down the side of the building that's more like an alley. It's like utility lighting that's permanent. I think there's some temporary fixtures there now. What else is in there? I think that's...
In short, it's the security lighting and for the building that's presently electrically plugged in and being powered.
Yeah. The seals on the building will also be illuminated with spotlights.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you.
And it'll also light up a little bit better along...
Along the Fourth Street. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, and just a reminder, once public comment and adjournment, we'll have to have the CDBG hearing.
Okay. Let's start with public comment?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
John Castello, I'm with the Concha Hocken Fire Company, number two. I just wanted to let you know that on October fifteenth, at two o'clock in the afternoon, we're gonna house the new Pierce Pumper that you were so gracious to purchase for us. We'll be sending you letters for invitations, which they've either gone out or they'll be going out shortly. But we just wanted to let you all know.
John?
Yeah.
We have them.
Okay. I knew they were coming out. I wasn't sure exactly when.
Here we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
My comment really fits in with what we've been hearing tonight about all of the work on the pipes and the water flow throughout the borough. And the two thousand and seven comprehensive plan notes state that Concha Hocken's community park acreage falls far below the recommended standard of six point two-five to ten point five acres per thousand people, according to the National Recreation and Park Association's standards. The notes state that considering the Concha Hocken's population continues to grow and that the available open space continues falling further below the recommended standard, the preservation of open space is vital. And in the different zoning hearings that we've had over the years, I mean, this is going back to two thousand and seven, that frequently, we're continuing to lose permeable space within the borough, as people put in parking pads, as two houses get built where one house was before, and there's less and less open ground. And I'm asking that the borough consider obtaining permeable space whenever possible to increase our recreational areas, our open space, our green space. And the Moore property, as I've attended the different hearings about the Moore property, we understand that the request to build the fast-food area with gas sales, that has not been approved. And as part of the discussion at those hearings, it was also talked about building more housing in that space. I'm asking that the borough consider obtaining that property and extending the park area for the A and B fields all the way out to Fayette Street, and turning that into green space, into permeable space. And in the recent rains, these heavy downpours that we've had, Sixth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, the even side of the street, because I guess the street slants, the gushes of water that are going down that street would knock down a person. And in the middle of last night, when we had this heavy downpour, I talked to one of the residents on East Seventh who has spoken to me about it before and has videos of the water just gushing down the street. She said it was really something in the middle of the night going down East Seventh Avenue. So, resilience is key, and as we've had these heavy storm falls and are looking to see what we can do with our water, I hope we consider continuing to expand the permeable space that we have in the borough. And then the other question I have is if there can be an update about the Fun Fest.
You can call her in and...
She is presently operating video equipment, so we can't bring her... But we are on track for September seventeenth. We continue to have acquired vendors and sponsors. We met briefly today. We now have our Facebook page, our website. Everything is live, so everything is on all of our sources for people to view. And I don't know how much more to add. I think the one thing that I really want to drive home is there was a great focus, and Ms. Flanagan was a part of this, on trying to do more for the kids. So, we're gonna have all kinds of trucks, you know, and all an area called Touch a Truck, where, you know, we'll have a loader, we'll have a trash truck, fire trucks, police vehicles, really trying to drive to the children. We also are talking with the various restaurants to... Rather than having food trucks, to allow the restaurants to do more, so that the restaurants and those who aren't on Fayette can actually come up to Fayette Street. We have entertainment at two different locations with stages and music. It goes from, I should note this off the top, I want to say noon till six, and we have a five K scheduled in the morning. And all of this information is available on our website. We have a page set up specifically for the Fun Fest. We have a Facebook page that Get Found is actually operating for us. So, we are now putting on the push in these last thirty days to get the message out and continue to work for sponsors and vendors. In fact, we expect that the borough will have a table so that we can pass out information as well.
So, you say September eight?
September seventeenth.
Seventeenth will be the date.
It is the date.
Also, the plan for the children will be a face painting booth. There will be some kind of games for them and a bounce house. So, we're trying to have it on the flat area. It'll be fourth to seventh, or fourth to sixth.
Sixth.
So, it'll be isolated from the adult partying at the beginning and at the end. So, it's sort of a quieter area for the children.
Yes.
I'm very excited for that week. We've got Inside Out Art, we've got our Fun Fest, and now we have our procession of the statues. So, I think that's gonna be a great weekend for Concha Hocken.
I'll be on the beach. Right. It'll be good.
You got anything, Mayor? No? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that the concerts in the park, I didn't make them all, but even though it was hot, they had a nice crowd, it was good music, and it was really nice down there. And also, the basketball. The basketball, the summer basketball's ongoing. If you want to see a good game, go down there. What night's already? Monday?
Monday and Wednesday.
Monday and Wednesday. If you want to see some good basketball, just go down to Suck Cliff Park and grab one of them benches down there. It's great sitting down there at night on the benches. It's nice and quiet and watch a good ballgame. Mary?
I'm just looking forward to the Fun Fest. It's gonna be a great day.
You?
Just looking forward to vacation.
I'm excited for that weekend.
Karen? Yeah? I got something to say. We got the signs for the police, the support Concha Hocken police. I see them coming up all over country. They still got something up that the Fellowship House, if somebody... If you go up to enact them, they'll give you some. And I think Mike ordered some. The police chief ordered some today, too. And to tend up the Fellowship House for you, Mayor.
Okay, great.
So, you can pick them up up there. So, if you want a sign, stop at the Fellowship House or act on the police. They're all over country, and I think we got a good police force to support them.
Absolutely.
Anything else? And that thing I can say, meaning adjourn.
And then, of course, we have to convene the CDBG hearing.
Five minutes?
Five-minute recess.
Five minutes, five minutes there, Chris. Then we'll have another hearing for five minutes.